Now looking at the bluff as a whole. You know, we did submit the grant proposal last summer. But with the state budget that that funding got pulled and that was to do. Um, you know, more monitoring of the bluff and movement of the bluff and as well as looking at some. Treatment and stabilization options. So I want to try and incorporate some of those things as well.
So in order to include that, this. It's like the specifics around the trail, they've got a preliminary design. It seems like most of the. People who were involved or interested are on board with that. Now to connect this up to monitoring of bigger parts of the bluff. I'm going to budget that that kind of. You have to come up with some kind of a work scope.
Yeah, and that's sort of what I mean, that is where we're working on. The the grant amount is up to $10 million and we want to the. The OPC also funded the city's coastal resiliency plan. And so we want to try and incorporate several elements from that plan into this implementation grant. So some of that was visual monitoring. And some other, you know, looking at stabilization and retreat.
Yeah, who would be doing a work scope for that kind of investigation?
It's it's a partnership. So I, for the grant we did last summer. Yeah, I worked with Giovanni and Gary and also Mike Wile because we were doing a format to do some drone. Surveys as well, so I could not put in some more than monitors and things like.
I might want to talk to you about that some other time. For the details. Who's actually responsible in the city is the city's consultants. You're the only staff person working on it. Right?
Yeah, and you know, we could probably get you a copy of the grant proposal that we submitted last summer. That might be a good source of information.
Yeah, I'd like to see.
Um, with regard to the short term fix on the actual urban trail. Should we be expecting to see a project for us the next two months, I guess?
It'll have to be something, you know, I think we're going to. You know, look at a couple of options, even if it's not opening the trail all the way to the beach, but opening part of the trail. Um, and so some, and if nothing else, we'd have to extend the closure. The closure will expire. So yes, we will see something before the MMA.
And I guess my follow up is, which you sort of answered, but. If further projects or closures would come to us and not straight to the city council. Sure, they've like taken over jurisdictions.
Uh, because it would be a new coastal development permit or whatever the project would be.
Um, all right, agenda item number two, design review coastal development permit for the road lines.
So this is a project for addition to an existing residence. The project is off West Haven Drive. It's a freeway intersection. This is a project that's similar to a project that's been approved in the past. A little bit more modest and just involving the primary residents. The property is own plan development, so it's a mixed use. Zone that allows multiple residences, also allows commercial uses. So there is a primary residence as well as accessory residence on the property. And a whole barn that's used for commercial farming business. Uh, the the site slopes up towards the north. Um, it's pretty well forested, um, upper proportions. And the development mostly occurs from south and. Um, closer to West Haven Drive. And then there's also a septic system that serves both residences and the property. Um, just to note, the 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 house was originally, the primary residence was approved by the county. Um, and then the city annexed the property. And so the house was actually approved to be taller than what the city's height limit is, so that'll come into play. Um, a little bit for for this addition, I'll talk about it a little bit later. Um, basically, the applicant's proposing a two story, approximately 1,000 square foot addition on the same. House, house will receive three bedrooms. Um, the accessory unit is two bedrooms and it's changing. Um, the project does require design review. The additions on the north, north side of the house are not particularly visible from from the road. Oh, and then I should have mentioned also Commissioner Cole's property. Small little corner of his property is within 500 feet. So for properties within 500 feet, there's presumed financial conflict of interest. Um, but the commissioner can, um, but that presumption of a financial effect. Did you increase themselves on so?
Uh, yeah, very careful consideration. I've determined that there is not a reasonably foreseeable financial effect on me or my property due to this project. While applicant's property lies within 500 feet of property owned by me, it is greater than 500 feet from my house. There are multiple developed properties between mine and the applicant's property. I cannot see the applicant's property from my house. Property is on a different road that is that is not used to access my property.
Thank you. As I mentioned, the project is, um, the project site is a planned development. Um, all uses require a use permit in the planned development zone, but only uses are being proposed, so. Um, it's a large piece of property, about one and three quarter acres, so it meets the minimum size requirements. Setbacks are all clearly met on on the property. And the table one shows the square footages. Uh, the primary residence will be somewhat larger than the 2,000 square foot guideline. That's found in the designer view criteria. Um, however, it does meet the floor. Core area to lock coverage ratios that that we look at, it's less than 10%. It's also, the finding is just a guideline and and. Other residences can be allowed if they're cited and designed in such a way that they're not obtrusive. So that's one of the findings I'm going to be making. Um, the height is is one issue that comes up. So the. As I mentioned, the county approved the existing residence at 30, max 30 feet in height from the front. Um, the way the city measures heights is a little bit different, measured from the average ground. Elevation covered by the structure. And we have historically interpreted that to be the native ground elevation. Uh, of the structure, which makes it difficult to measure on sites that have already been distributed and developed. And so I I kind of just measured from the various corners and. The, let's see, the height of the addition is about 1.2 feet taller than the highest ridge line on the existing residence. With measuring from the four corners, the ground elevation on the four corners, the existing residence is. It's about 20, um. 27 and then a quarter feet in height and the, um, if you measure the whole structure with the addition, it's actually a little bit less than 27. So, um. Uh, structures could be added on to, um, if they're nonconforming, you just can't increase the degree of conformity. So. The height of the addition is measured from the average ground elevation is shorter than the existing house. But the actual ridge line is slightly higher, so it's it's again, it's a it's a little bit complicated to look at. But I think it can be found to not increase the existing degree of nonconformity because the total. Height is is decreasing, um, when measured from the average ground elevation addition. Um, and the applicant has submitted some information stating why it's important for the height in terms of design and accessibility. Structure. Um, and I think that in this area, you know, views aren't really an issue. Um, and so the overall height might not be as important. Like I said, it's it's sort of difficult to measure, it'd be difficult to limit it to 25 feet because where is that measured from? If anything, if you guys are concerned about the height, I would suggest maybe a bit more than the ridge line. Other than that, all the zoning ordinance, um, standards are met. Plenty of parking on the site, open space, distances between buildings, all various requirements. There's no slope stability or seismic issues on this site that require further study. The septic system is sized appropriately for, um. Two units with a total of five bedrooms. There is a reserve area already designated. And health department kind of no issues with the project. Uh, the the design, um. Was intended to not require an entryable, so no trees are being discarded. Design review and beauty protection findings are written in a manner to. About approval, as usual, if by the landmark finance camp. Mess, they should be recorded accordingly. Staff recommendation is for approval. There is a motion that we could use at the top of page 10. Um, and again, as usual, we could add additional conditions of approval to address concerns. Um, delay action and continue the project to request additional information. Or deny the project if you feel that one or more of the findings made. Um, there are eight conditions of approval, nothing in there that's out of the ordinary.
I'm I'm still quite, I'm not quite sure I understand, uh. The the height, I understand the height issue, but I'm not sure how you've addressed it. So I'm looking at page six of 11 of the staffing report, which is packet page 25. And, um, at the top of the page. It says that there's another option, option two is to require a variance for the excess height. Which would require additional findings and therefore a continuance. And yet, what we're saying is that even though we believe that the height is higher than the maximum allowable. We're saying that it's okay in terms of the recommendation for a motion.
So, yeah, I mean, I was just giving you some options there, um, because the. The house would be considered legal nonconforming because it was approved under the county standards. Um, and so the city's nonconforming regulations allow nonconforming structures to be. Extended, modified, um, added on to as long as the existing degree of nonconformity is not increased. And because the overall height as measured from the average ground elevation, at least from the four. Corners or the four sides is actually decreasing, I think you could make that fine, that's that's.
Yeah, I just wanted to get clarification. And then I was a little confused on, um, I guess this is a statement from the, uh. Construction company. It's on page 31 of the packet. Just to clarify one more time, um. The overall height of the new addition is less than the existing nonconforming structure. That's the second to the last sentence in the paragraph. So that's what, that's what we're saying, right?
Let's see, in this email, oh, the, well, so. If you're just measuring from an elevation, the new ridge line is about 1.2 feet higher than the highest point on the existing. But because the ground slopes up and we're measuring from the ground elevation, it's actually not any higher.
Just wanted to clarify that, yes. All right. Um, that's all.
Um, would DAP can like to give a statement? I have to, but if you want to, um, by, yeah.
Sure. Susan Rowland, applicant, um. I think Trevor has done a great job in terms of kind of covering all the bases on this because. We've had the property for a number of years. We were going to do an addition that was significantly larger a little more than 10 years ago. Um, but just not to at that time, um. The property is unique, can turn it out, we have a lot of redwoods on it. And so one of our things was to maintain the redwoods and that's what we do and not take anything out. And like Trevor's talking about, what the addition is actually built into the hillside as the hillside's on the minus. So it has the appearance of being a little bit tall, but really isn't. We designed it that way and architecturally, it's more appealing the way that we've designed it. We've looked at a number of different things, but because we wanted to limit the size of the addition, limit removing trees. That's what we ended up with and actually alluded at the beginning to, uh, and Richard was here when we first were working on this property. Three plus years ago, it was a good idea to have an upside down house, you know, kitchen, living, dining upstairs. As we get older, it's a little more challenging to be going up and downstairs. So that's the idea is to make this handicap accessible. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you.
I go ahead and open it to tell the comment. Are we going to get any? What's that? Um, do we have any other questions or comments from the commission?
He's like the well thought out project.
Yeah, I agree. Like you made a good use of the space.
Well, I'll move based on application materials, information, findings included in the staff report and based on public testimony. I find that the project is consistent with the Trinidad LCP and other applicable regulations. And I move to adopt the information required, design review and new protection findings of the staff report. And approve the project as described in the staff report and as condition variant.
I'll lose the favor.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, um, now we're moving on to agenda item number three. General plan update on the safety element.
Thank you, everyone.
It goes still here.
So, um. I I'm I'm kind of excited about my use of GBT with this. I'm I'm curious to see what what you guys think. Um, so I think I think it was Chris that suggested that at the last meeting. And I I've been talking to some other planners and I have some ideas for other things to use it for too, but, um. Yeah, I think, you know, one of the biggest issues was the amount of technical information in the previous draft. So I kind of went section by seven section and then asked. Jackie BT to summarize the data for me, and I think it did a pretty good job. Um, so hopefully we're at a point where we can kind of go through it. Or or page by page. Um, I did, I I pared down and I removed a few of the policies, but but not a whole lot of them. And I moved a few things around. I did not give you a track changes version because it was just, it it was. It was not very logical that way. Um. If anybody wants a track changes version, I I. I mean, I left the policy numbers the same, so hopefully. Find things for maybe you have comments. Um, I, this time I just left out section of the seven day. And then section D for emergency preparedness, um, to just focus on the hazards and things. You know, I think. As I mentioned before, there are not. Um, there are almost no examples of recently certified. Safety elements that have been certified by the coastal commission. And a lot of these policies were taken from, um. Avon Bay, which is the one recent one that has been certified. So I don't know, you know, how much little room we're going to have with the coastal commission. I think part of the reason that we don't have a lot of certified safety elements is because. Local jurisdictions and coastal commission staff are are pushing back and forth, um, on on these, these types of issues and things. So, um, but I would, yeah, I'd like to get a draft to coastal commission staff and, um. The transmit comments, questions, um.
Do you mind having any? Well, I think. How does everyone feel about going through on a page by page basis through the document? Yes, if you're into that, do you, do you want to start with any? Overarching questions for Trevor comments?
I think I have a question. Where is the city element? What is the attitude towards? Is going along with whatever coast commission wants versus, um. Reason to see some of your policies that just seem to be on the top.
Um, I mean. Okay, like I said, I think that's why LCP updates are not happening. Is is because the coastal commission, local jurisdictions are not being able to find common ground and and agree. It's required. Um, I think managed retreat is kind of the the classic example. Yeah, there's very limited options for such a thing in Trinidad and, you know, some of these, you know, solutions they talk about, about, you know. Training development rights and things that again, there's just not, you just don't. Trinidad's too small and it's already developed along the bluff, so. Yeah, but but they don't seem to give Trinidad much of a break just because it's small. So. Yeah, I I think the city, we we could continue on with our existing LCP forever, but it it's it's not very good. And so it would be nice to, um. Have have something better. I did, um, I I was pushing on staff a little bit at our last, um, meeting to. Think about how we can somehow break up the LCP. Um, update into more manageable pieces because they, you know. Basically, what they told me is they won't accept anything but everything. So the entire general plan, can use plan and all the landage ordinances, um, but. And I I could see the general plan, um. But but it seems like we could do even some elements of the general plan as long as what we're adopting doesn't conflict with what's already certified. And, you know, I think there's a lot of updates. We could do the zoning ordinance. So I asked them to please consider how we can. And, you know, I think there's a lot of updates. We could do the zoning ordinance. So I asked them to please consider how we can. Because we it takes so long to get through all of those things that by the time we get done with the zoning ordinance update, we're going to have to update the general plan again. And we've been kind of going in circles on that. So, yeah, I'd like to get some meaningful. Get some real updates.
Okay, so there's no. Philosophy of just going along versus the extreme would be, you know. Putting them on a variety of different elements.
I think city, I think cities have taken the whole whole range. We have not, but.
New here, so I don't know.
I think, you know, I think it might be, you know, it could be worthwhile for for someone to invite Mike Wilson, for example, up and maybe talk to him about. I mean, I know he's familiar with Trinidad, but if you talk to him about some of the challenges, that might be one approach is to actually talk to. Well, these are local rep on the coastal commission.
Right. Okay, okay. Yeah. Okay. And the only reason I kind of bring this up is because it seems like. There's a lot of different elements in this, but with the new sea level rise hazard philosophies. And the kind of things that may really affect Trinidad. These these hazards is seem to be to be one of the the main issues. That the city has to deal with as far as finding.
I I think it's one of the most difficult ones. Yeah.
I mean, obviously I had a kind of a narrow view, maybe than the one I hope to do. So I want to make sure that it doesn't get in the way of the overall goals to get, you know, updated from the coastal.
Yeah. Yeah, no, um, you know, I think if it were just flooding or just fires or just, you know, it it that it wouldn't be as much of an issue. I mean. If you haven't looked at some of the other general plan elements, um. You know, you'll see the number of policies we have to have now for for water quality and, you know, stormwater runoff and BMPs and um environmentally sensitive habitat areas. So. So this isn't the only element that has, you know, a lot more complexity than than what we're used to. Um, that's just. Some of it's some of it's coastal commission, but some of it's just, I mean, you have to protect environmentally sensitive habitat areas anyway. We, I mean, Trinidad doesn't even have any regulations for wetlands.
Right. And 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 these are issues that most, it seems to me, most rural, small cities had had that same group of things to deal with. But Trinidad stands out. Because of the realization that we've got problems along the bluff. And most of the bluff is encroached on by by development or the few places that ever been developed, you know. People like to develop. And that's why I it seems like this is one of those places sizing safety element that you know, you need to make sure we're looking out for. Trinidad and not. I I'm not so concerned about retreating, you know, like a somebody's threat. What do you do? Move your house. There's some houses that could move. If they are, but.
And, you know, I think a lot of these policies, you know, there's a lot of, there's, you know, a number of policies for existing shoreline protection devices. Like we've been, we have two in Trinidad. Yeah. So it's it's these things that might come up one time in Trinidad, but we still have to have a policy to cover.
But some of the, yeah, so we'll get into it. But I mean, some of the things have to do with. You know, making statements on people's deeds, things like that, that I wonder if they're legal to require or something to say that they're. But the point is. If you if you just took everything that they said in here and applied it directly. A person is trying to sell a piece of real estate that's near the block. Is it a root hurt?
I think that's true, not just Trinidad. And I, you know, I think the deed restriction, um. We Trinidad has reset for a long time for septic, um, where we you know, as a as a condition of approval where we say, and it was in the worldwide staff report where they have to put a deed restriction limiting the number of veterans and units. And really what that is intended to be is a disclosure tool so that a buyer buyer can't say they didn't know. Well, they should have.
That's ninety percent of the time, any deficiency in the septic system ain't being designed. So it's not a big. You know, red flag if somebody was looking at buying something. It's like, oh, well, there's some expansion expansive.
Well, we do have a lot of, um, you know, people who when they're they're building the house or adding on, they say it's a a two bedroom house and one unit. And then when they sell it, it's all of a sudden three bedrooms and two units. We have to get a lot of that.
Well, real estate people are who they are. Okay, but thank you. I think I understand you.
Um. I can't remember how many pages the previous draft of this was, but it seems like this is quite a bit pared down.
I think it's at least ten, ten or twelve pages less. Yeah.
Yeah, great. Um. I mean. Not that you have a lot evidence to go off of, but. Do you think this would be even begin to be palatable for the coastal commission? What this current draft, you think?
Yeah, I think that. I mean, they they do look at the text, but I don't think for them the text is important as the policies and and the policies, I, again, they I haven't done a whole lot of modification from half moon bay. So I would assume that they are mostly acceptable.
Yeah, just a couple of overall questions or comments. Uh, the first one is, and I know that this is probably way out there. But do we have to put away a disclosure on documents that have been edited with chat G G? I don't know that we need to answer it now, but uh, it might, you know, a- as far as it being a public document. It's a little bit different than if you were doing something for homework assignment or something like that. So I just wonder what the policy might be for a public document that's been edited with AI.
I can certainly put in a disclaimer that says technical information has been summarized in part by chat.
Yeah, I I don't even know if we have to do that, but it might be interesting to understand whether understand whether or not it's. Yeah. Uh, and then the other thing, it kind of resonated off what Roland was saying. Uh. I think at one time when we said we were going to have our joint meeting with the city council, that this was going to be an issue that we wanted to raise. Uh, with the city council, that being a, you know. There's a, there's a complexity to dealing with the coastal commission, which is lots of times very, very challenging. And I think it's important that they understand it. And then secondly, they can determine, they can decide whether or not they want to push back. I mean, I don't think we really can because, you know, staff really can't do anything. They're going to say yes or no to.
Well, I ask the question because it's like.
Yeah, and and the 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 council ultimately can't decide. At least from my perspective, they can decide whether or not they they want to raise it to, uh, uh, Mr. Wilson or or not, or whatever. So those are two. The rock.
Uh, well, shall we let's take it page by page? Now we'll start page one, page three. All right, we'll go to page two.
Oh, we already started. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Let's start. Okay, so yes, a question on page three. Are we doing on three?
Sure, let's go to three. Okay, there's nothing on two.
Right. Uh, so paragraph three, relationship to other planning documents. You know, you've you've mentioned a number of, you know, the Hope County operational area. City of Trinidad, EOP, coastal resiliency plan. And that the safety element has to be consistent with these. But what is the uh, priority level? In other words, there's got to be one that's overriding than the others or or in ascending order of importance. What what is it?
That's a good question. Um, you know, I think the probably the emergency operations plan is the most fluid. Um, well, I mean, I I mean, probably the general plan, I mean, because that is kind of a legislative type of document. It sets forth and rules and and policies and regulations that have to be followed, especially for the coastal portions. Um, you know, it it specifies how CDPs are issued and and the LCP is amended. So, um, I would say that's more on a regulatory level where, um, the hazard mitigation plan. They are, there's a lot of specifics that are dictated by FEMA and their requirements. Um. And it's, you know, a lot of that is the city has to have that in order to be eligible for for certain funding and things like that. Um, so, yeah, I would say the general plan would overarching one and then other documents should be consistent with that.
Okay, so then, I understand what you're saying. Safety element overrides all these other documents. Okay.
And moving on, page four.
Question on. I can say.
Yeah, no, no, I'm I'm saving mine for.
All right, fair enough.
So, uh, the city of Trinidad Emergency Operations Plan, what what's the status of that?
I have nothing to report.
And my question is then, who is accountable for doing that dark?
I don't know, but I wish it would be updated so I could copy it into into this. Um, and I'm. Yeah.
Is there's an old?
I mean. What what's the what's is it twenty twenty, twenty nineteen? What is it? It's the newest one?
I honestly, at this point, don't know. The only one I've seen was done back in the early two thousands. And I know there's been an update.
There's an update, yeah. I mean, at least in the teens. Have you seen the emergency preparation plan? No. I mean, I I'm sure it's due for an update. Um. And and again, some of that information I would really, I mean, I guess it could be someone writes it for the general plan and then we copy it into the EOP or someone writes it for the EOP and they copy it into the general plan.
Yeah, right. When that update happened.
I want to say twenty seventeen, twenty nineteen.
I is it online?
I think it was twenty fourteen.
So my my question is that that here again, we have a document that we don't know anything about. And we're referencing it and a lot of the the interaction between the EOP and the safety element in my mind. Is very, very important, and yet we don't have a document. I mean, we have a document, but it clearly needs updating because it references things like chain of command. The original document was based on a fire department, volunteer fire department, as I recall, which had more than less than four or five people. So. It's it's difficult for me to get real enthused about the safety element. When a very important document is not available to us for integration and reference. Because I I I just don't know where we're at.
Okay, I will, I will track that down. And see what I can come up with and that might be something to mention to the city council. I did did send out an email about trying to schedule that for the April meeting for a joint meeting. Um, you know, I think that that the EOP would play into the emergency preparedness section that we're not too, we're not dealing with tonight. Because those are city issues and not coastal resource issues.
I realize what I said was an editorial comment, but would be nice to have it.
Uh, we are, the the hazard mitigation plan has to be updated every five years and is is working. The county and cities are are working.
That's on page four. Now we go to page five.
Um, hazard avoidance for new critical facilities. We we talk about this a lot of places. And I I think it might be useful to define what we believe those to be.
Critical facilities.
Yes.
Yeah, I do. I need to, I mean, we have a glossary. Um, you know, we've talked a little bit about whether we should have a glossary in each element. I think particularly the safety element that might be useful. It's it's we've gone back and forth, I think, on that a little bit, but I I I do need to look at glossary and the safety element. And I mean, do you want to see the whole glossary or just safety element? At this point.
Um. Well, I it might be useful to see the whole thing so that we we haven't seen it for a while. I mean, we.
No, you you haven't seen it in a while.
And there's probably twenty different acronyms.
And we do, I mean, do you need to add a list of acronyms? I think we've been doing that at the end of the documents. Yeah.
Um. I guess to your comment TP two, Trevor, which is sort of. What else is? RJ's. Avoidable hazards. I mean, I I think that's fine word to use in that, I mean. Um. That instance.
Which one are you looking at? Sorry.
Sorry, at the bottom of the page, on page five.
Oh, okay.
Hi. I guess if you hadn't highlighted it, I would have thought it was. But it looks like you're looking for feedback.
What a word I have to. You know, it was like this hazard, so.
Yeah.
You know, it's still anybody who has it. Well, I'm sorry, you know.
Everywhere is subject to an earthquake. So everywhere is sometimes a hazard. Yeah. So I I just wasn't sure what is the word for that. Unreasonable.
I think it's close enough, honestly.
Well, I think some hazards, I think I guess the intent there is some hazards are more inherently avoidable or like.
Like flood plain.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Versus others are more wide ranging. If we're not going to try and mitigate for these hazards.
So we think that we think that's why I will look at.
Yeah, I think it's. Uh, page six.
Uh, kind of just a format thing, but uh, at the bottom of of page six, we talk about three, um. Issues, ground shaking, tsunamis and landslides. Then on the very next page. Um. We talk about five issues. we talk about five issues. So it wasn't clear to me, I mean, it just should be consistent, I guess.
And the policy one point seven replacement following disaster. So if there were a disaster, people were trying to rebuild that. Um, the thing is basically like we wouldn't, any currently, we'll say like the rot lines, right, their house is too tall, right, their house burned down wildfire. They wouldn't, we wouldn't allow them to build it as tall as it currently is, so. Yeah, I guess, I guess I'm, what I really ask is like, how many current structures in town wouldn't be allowed to be built, be rebuilt to like their current state if there were some.
Well, that's a good question. I need to I mean, this would have, would have a house on the bluff and it wouldn't be
Right, yeah, exactly.
Um, and I, because I think the intent is that you would allow it to be rebuilt, even if it's nonconforming. So that means it's not going to be all current LCP standard. So, yeah, I need to take that closer to the point.
The place burns down, a lot of times they sort of restart. In my experience over time, having dealt with a few clients that had the house destroyed. A lot of new requirements coming in, the grandfather, kind of, a lot of that goes away.
It does, and.
So that's.
And that's, I mean, I guess, so if you think about our existing nonconforming regulations, so a structure that doesn't make the bluff setback um, currently is not conforming, but without a study, I don't know how we'd know that. And you can alter and replace non, so if a structure is destroyed more than fifty percent, then it becomes subject to current standards, I think is what I currently, I are you per these assumptions?
That's probably a legal question.
And we have, yeah, and we have interpreted that to be destroyed by disaster, so we let people actually rebuild. It wasn't destroyed. I have to, I have to look at them.
You mean like the tree fell on three quarters of your house?
Yeah, yes, and then you, then it's subject to all standards. So if your house um, didn't need some setbacks, sort of bluff or lot line, whatever it is, um, and uh, the tree fell on it and caused enough damage so that, I think it's, I think it's sixty percent um, that it would cost sixty percent of the value to rebuild it. Then you have to conform it.
Don't think that they legally allow people not use their current footprint. If a footprint is I don't know what sack you're saying, but basis, they might, you know, design standards, you know, building code standards, maybe height standards, but I don't think you can make them abandon that, you know, the site unless you condemn the whole thing.
Yeah, that would be good to understand the legal precedent of that better.
Then we're going to lose to half a dozen different places that were rebuilt in areas that are clearly under serious hazard. An area that can maintain their footprint.
But I think that they I bet the coastal commission would require at least that it not extend the life of the structure. So, you know, if the structure is fifty years old already, you don't get to extend it a hundred years, you only get that, you know, what the life would have been from when it was constructed, probably. But yeah, I'll have to, um, I will look into that.
Yeah, get true.
Yeah, there you go.
Um, I want to uh, top of the page, you highlighted known hazards. I think we want to be maybe more specific on the types of hazards that would require a deed restriction. Based on what we were talking about before, there's every, everyone's subject, some amount of known hazard. So if that's just logic hazards or flood hazards.
Yeah.
It's a line.
Then let's see the other questions. I guess for two B seven, does it make more sense here in the general? Um, I mean, because it doesn't have to be specific to shoreline hazards, it could be other hazards as well.
Wait, where are you?
Uh, the next one down, PS two B seven, assumption of risk.
Oh, right, well.
It can be the sh- the shoreline hazard is something that's a subset of coastal bluff has. That's where I've been meaning to hear, but sometimes it gets confusing because, you know, our coastal bluffs pretty much go right down to the beach.
I think, uh, what I, I think.
Mine is that narrow zone would I think later on it talks about wave heights and things like that. I'm assuming that that worst possible high wave problem with shoreline is.
I think coast shoreline does include bluffs. I could change that to coastal. I think my question was more, should it apply to other hazards, flood, fire, those sorts of things?
That's good, I don't, I don't think so, otherwise everyone's getting, or maybe not everyone, but a lot.
Look, you're you're talking about assumption of risk, right?
Yes.
Yeah, and the deed restriction.
Well, oh, okay, but it's not just shoreline, it's it's also potential earthquake faults. And those.
Oh, if you're in the fault zone.
Yeah, uh, and I know that there are properties in Trinidad that that have had to do the, um, yeah, and and, um, so they're not, and they're not necessarily near the shoreline, I guess that's what I'm saying.
So, you know, I I think what would be good is, so my next question, hazardous areas should just be defined, and I think maybe that's, that would be um, important as we define hazardous areas as in the outpost real of hazard zone. Um, in the flood hazard zone, in the bluff setback zone, in the, so it's it's a specific list of hazardous areas, and then we use that term, and it would kind of cover, you know, what we said known hazards, it would cover that as well, and so we define and list what those hazards are.
So, remember now, you're talking about something, flood zone is got defined boundary.
That's right.
Alquies real of, it's got defined boundary, you can literally say that start right here.
Yeah.
This line, you're in the zone, and here you're out of the zone. And that is not happening under the gloves, you're on the way.
We're, we're, we're going to though, so I think, so I actually, so in my, I forgot to mention in my report figures, and I'm, it's, I'm, I've been working with our GIS person on figures this week. Um, and it's unfortunate I don't have them, and I think that would be helpful, so I think we're going to end up, um, you know, with with like a stability, like a landslide hazards map. And we're going to end up with a bluff setback. That's sort of a bluff hazard.
You know, you're talking about bluff hazard setback. Those are not usually a line, they're a group of lines. They usually are not depending on who the author is, usually on a bluff, it's like, this zone is high, very high hazard, this zone is high hazard, this zone is medium, this zone is low.
So what I, I guess what it's.
Specific, that's what you end up with convention.
I think what it would be is, um, yeah, like, um, in our ADU ordinance, I settled the coastal commission staff on a hundred and twenty five feet. So anything within a hundred and twenty five feet of a bluff edge, you have to do a site specific study. So that's what it would, that's what we would call the bluff hazard zone, is anything within a certain distance, we're not giving it a hazard rating. Um, but it's where.
It's unreasonable to have something within a hundred and twenty five feet of a defined bluff edge and say they have to put a deed restriction on their property to develop or repair or or to sell it. Yeah, I, I, I think if you put that in front of somebody, you're you're asking for a lawsuit.
It happens all the time.
Well.
But it would only be.
Ben, go ahead.
And it would only be associated with a development permit. So we're not just going to tell everybody within a hundred and twenty, we could have a bluff, all of a sudden you have to put a deed restriction of only be when they come and apply for a discretionary permit that we say, okay, you can have this permit, but you have to put this on your deed. And they can choose to, they can appeal that, they could have choose to object to it.
It would seem like you need to do a little more work before you come up with these numbers, like a hundred and twenty five feet.
I, you know, and so I think, and we could, but the amount of work I think the amount of work that the city would have to do to push back and say a hundred is enough is probably more than we want to get into, it could be easier. So I I did this back and forth with with the coastal commission, um, and I think, because I think Mendocino County had for their ADUs, it was a hundred and twenty, if you're within a hundred and twenty five feet. And I tried to argue that it's less than Trinidad, because what they did is they took their bluff setback studies, because when you're on a bluff now, the coastal commission requires you to do a bluff retreat study and show that the structure isn't going to be destabilized for the economic life of the structure, usually seventy five years for a house, seventy five to a hundred years. Um.
Remember the old area of demonstration? They had to do them in angle, and then they, but it has, is the coastal commission abandoned that? Were they coming up with these set numbers? I mean, you didn't make up a hundred and twenty five feet, right?
I did not, again, it came from Mendocino, and then I suggested that a hundred was enough for Trinidad, and they said, no, or I think they said, oh, we talked to our geologist, so that there's a state coastal profession geologist. Now, it might be worth, I didn't actually talk to them, it might be worth having an actual geologist.
Okay, so the numbers came from the coastal commission seeming to be okay with that number.
Yeah, and I, what I'm thinking is that we could do a smaller setback on the west bluff, because we know that's more stable and and the larger setback on.
You don't want to get into the discussion of that just then.
So.
That is a.
So anyway, that that would be how I would define hazard areas, so there's these specific areas that are mapped.
I think if you're going to do it, you do it for the whole thing, because I would argue when folks about whether that western bluff was more stable than these others. I mean, I've, I've got sixty years of of observing those bluffs, and hardly anybody around does. And just looking at old photos and things like that doesn't tell you a lot about what's going on there. But all kinds of ground is moving on that west side. I mean.
So so maybe just a hundred and twenty five feet is.
I I would suggest that, otherwise it's going to be.
Well, that's, that's, I have that question on my.
Yes, and if you can use a liberal policy coastal commission and lay it on the land, then you can now deal with exceptions and you know, in site specific studies that might give you, you know, less of a setback than a hundred and twenty five feet.
Yeah, and that's the thing, it's just within that zone, you have to do a site specifics.
And again, just for clarification, this this only is relative when there is new development and or uh, modifications, correct?
Yeah, Lea Ron, there's some sections in here where that's not true. The nonconforming development.
Well, but.
For the most part, it applies when you apply for a permit.
Yeah.
Um, it sort of seems to me, reading this again, that those two policies, one point five and two B seven, could be combined. The one, I mean, they're both asking for a deed restriction, ensuring the owners and future owners understand the presence and assume the risks, whatever hazards. Just so, you know, the second one sort of goes into a little more detail about what that actually mean.
Okay.
Just for some, just for. I mean, otherwise, what would you have to?
Yeah, I.
You have to continue with the restrictions, I guess, right?
Yeah, no, I I think you're right, and this is one I moved out of a later section, the section. Yeah, and and yeah, that I think that makes sense, yeah.
I sure wish you'd come up with some something to qualify a little bit more than just shoreline hazards, like serious shoreline hazards or or a.
I'm going to, I'm going to define hazardous areas as those areas that are mapped as potential hazard areas. And then I'm just going to use the term hazardous elements.
That's simple.
Significant. Sort of substantial. These are the words we usually play around with when we're talking about hazards. You know, some might be just stronger than others.
Well, you know, but some of it, I think, you know, it's it's.
You're saying potential is so open ended?
Well, but I think with a hundred and twenty five feet, you don't know that you don't, maybe the hazards are like in the first twenty five feet, I mean, you don't know until you do that, that's what I mean by potential. Um.
Okay.
But I think um, I mean, and and I think sometimes these hazards depend on, um, you know, what is your acceptable level of risk, and that might depend on what the development is, so if it's a shed versus a house versus a hospital, not that we're going to have one of those, but I mean, that, so those.
Acceptable is very personal.
Yeah.
Many people accept things way more than other people.
Yes.
Other people, you know, would be comfortable within five hundred feet of a slope.
But then that's, then they can choose to buy the property or not, or develop the property.
And I I guess this would just be applying to development in those zones or a parcel that has a that's done on a parcel, that's.
Now, if somebody's breaking out a new parcel, you want them to be the criteria.
But I mean, so, I think, I think like for for bluff retreat, for example, I think that, um, If you're within that hundred, that's, that setback where a special study is required and the study says, okay, fifty feet is safe. I think the quote, like we, I think we did this with Hessequist. Where, you know, the, the study found that the house's location was safe over seventy five years. But we, we don't know, I mean, we don't know that for sure. So he still had to. I don't think we required a deed restriction, but he was supposed to disclose that to future owners and assume, the assumption of risks and, and responsibility. So should something happen and the house fall on the beach, he's responsible for putting this.
So you made an agreement to notify somebody in the future without attaching it to it.
I'd have to look, I'd have to look at the wording because we didn't have the regulations for that. So we might have just done it as a condition. Can't remember. We did some deed restrictions on that.
That's the way you could. You can force.
Require that. Yeah, it might have been a deed, I, I forget exactly what.
Some people forget. Reports get lost. The deed is per.
But if the. House or that was to be built was outside of the hundred and twenty five feet, but part of the parcel was within the twenty, hundred and twenty five feet.
Then I think it should be okay. I think it should be okay.
But that permit is for building a structure.
Yes, but it's also, it's outside that hundred and twenty five feet where you even need the special study. So you really need the.
But if somebody is trying to split a parcel.
Uh, split a parcel. If you split a parcel, that's development and then you have to do the study.
Yeah, and that, and therefore. If they don't. If they split a parcel for future development. Then the whole parcel needs to be covered. Otherwise.
Or, or they do the study that says this is the buildable, this is the safe buildable area.
Okay, so if that's the condition of approving a parcel.
Yes.
Then they have to have a buildable area defined.
Yes.
And sees ordinances and all that are consistent with that.
Okay, no, um. I mean, probably to some degree. Um, I mean, that, that's pretty standard, um.
Yeah, it's standard in the county.
Yeah, and like we did. When we did a subdivision in the Alcoa Spruolo Zone, they had to do the, the fault study to show that there was a buildable area outside the fault. For, for both parcels.
Yeah, of course, that, like I say, been defined by the state a long time ago. So, you know, get tied up in. Local consultants arguing about.
Should we move on to page seven? Or do you have any, Richard? Six. Uh, no, I've already mentioned what I have.
Um, moving on to page eight.
Just a couple of real quick comments under, on the second paragraph. The last sentence says shaking intensity maps generated by. USGS and CGS can direct emergency response efforts to the most impacted areas. I, I don't know how you do that. If, if there is a. Intense shaking. I, I don't know how the maps are going to. Help us. Say where we need to go for emergency response. Does that make any sense?
Yeah, I think that's really probably more on a regional.
Where did this language come from?
I'd have to look at what it was originally. I mean, because this, I'm sure I stuck this in the chat G P T. So it must have had something. So I think, you know, even within Humboldt County. There's quite a bit of variation in the shaking intensity map and Trinidad is in that really high area and all around Humboldt Bay. So I think, you know, if there were a, for example, a cascade event. You know, it might be useful, like I said, even on a county level to say, okay, we're gonna first check Trinidad and Humboldt Bay. Because they're most likely to have a high shaking intensity. But on a Trinidad scale. It's not gonna vary. So it really doesn't. I think that's just a general.
Yeah, I, it's. A little awkward, I guess, that the way it was reported back.
It's not gonna help Trinidad.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, you're, you're right. We could just delete it and it would be, and it will be okay.
It can't hurt when we're not, it seems like.
Well, and, and, and actually, when we do the emergency response part. That's where.
Yeah.
That's where this would be a little bit more applicable. My point is, I just don't see that you look at a map and say, oh, this is where we have to go.
Right.
Well, I mean, the, the intensity map. Only happens, you know, after the earthquake.
Well, see, I don't read it that way. I, I, what I thought this was, that these are maps that are already outlined.
No, 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 it's, it's earthquake specific.
Well, there are both. There are both. And I'm actually not sure which one it was intending to refer to because there.
One, they, they have seismic zones. That is the same as a shaking intensity.
But there is a shaking intensity map for California.
Well.
That, that, um, so I don't know which one it refers.
And that's, that's what I was thinking in my mind, that it was some, a map somewhere that said, okay, Trinidad is gonna shake more than.
Yeah, yeah.
No, the whole county. They're making two zones in the county, the east half and the west half.
It's a, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a rainbow. It's a. Great, it's, it's a light gradient, but Trinidad's in that, in the red purple.
Anything else on page eight? Moving to page nine.
Right at the top of the page, uh, the. Phrase mean lower low water. I've heard that one before.
And there's a mean higher high water too, and it's.
Yeah, I, I just.
It's. And I don't know why.
Why they know it.
Well, no, I, I, I completely understand that. I guess, I've always heard mean. Lower water. I didn't realize that there was a low in there, but I, I, I'm fine if there's a.
Both. I will verify which one it is and.
It, it is a legitimate term.
Yeah, yeah, I, I just, uh, just was unfamiliar with it. And then the other thing in that, uh, and I mentioned, I think the last time we went through this is in that same paragraph that, uh. The last phrase of that paragraph there, but there are no residential structures within the tsunami hazard area. And we, that is not, we know that's not true.
No, it is.
In scenic.
Yeah.
On scenic.
Yeah.
The Hessequist area.
And, and not the, not, not the Sebring Kelly Place either. Nope.
I thought for sure that map that you had in here.
Really?
Okay.
It is not surprising me. I know. It's surprising.
Okay. So that, that, uh, that map or that figure is not here, right?
I didn't know. I've been, I, like I said, I've been working on them, but I don't.
Okay.
I'm close, but I don't actually. But I, I think I did map the tsunami.
Alright.
But it's just printed off the county. And I think, I think it's based on elevation from the LIDAR.
Well, this is hard to read, but it's the, uh, yellow, right?
Yes, the yellow.
Yellow.
What's the other along that edge?
This is, the Sebring place is up here. It's in the green and so is, is, uh, I guess Hessequist. But this is like the beach. This is just the beach. If, um, I'll put it on an aerial photo and you can actually see.
That's, you know, intuitively just doesn't.
I know.
It was that, that, uh, that Banner used to own. It used to be. The. Good principal place. I'm going back a little way.
With the down, down at the Parker Creek Trail, huh?
Yeah, at the very end.
So, yeah, so it used to be the. And I was thinking of it as the Sebring place, but, um.
I don't know if it could.
The, the mayor, Mayor Kelly and, and her husband might.
Yeah, okay. There's several ways, but, you know, okay.
Well, I, that's what, that's why I mentioned when I, I did, I, I thought there were. Okay. Alright.
Anything else?
Um, uh, again, um, just, uh, if we're putting together a glossary. On, uh, PS two dot two geological reports, they mention subsidence. Subsidence. Right? Did I say that right?
Subside.
Subsidence. Might be useful to have that, uh. Defined. At least I had to look it up.
That is why the sea level rise in Humboldt Bay is so much higher than anywhere else because of the land is.
Yeah.
It should say tectonics. Like that.
As opposed to like water table or something.
Well, yeah, I.
Yeah.
Have ground settlements that.
Yeah.
But like I said, it covers all of it.
Okay, move on to page ten.
Okay, who came up with this development new structure on hill slopes? Three percent of greater Shebby Provened.
I think that's fairly standard.
Um, with, not just prohibited with, without. Appropriate engineering design. These are many places that are built on slopes that are deep with thirty percent. If not in Trinidad.
I'll, I'll look at some other jurisdictions. I think it's, I know I've seen that before. I think it's not uncommon.
We have that disclaimer on your.
I mean, I could add unless. And I think this was, this was suggested by Roland is some language like that. You want me to add, is there consensus? I should add a disclaimer?
Uh, I, I thought it was, I've made a note that I thought it was a good idea to add, yeah.
I just. I don't know. He, I mean, this is basically most of the lines have come out of some existing document. It surprised me. You know, that, that way. The, whereas a qualified professional will deal with fifteen percent greater. All of a sudden you're gonna prohibit, prohibit it when it goes to, you know, poison. Like, since this is gonna be a policy, right?
Do you have your inner self. Facility man? I mean, the slope, I have the slope.
Uh, yeah, I, I think the, the fact that you've made a comment, uh, TP fourteen. I, I think makes sense to add that. So, yeah. And we've also made a, an exception too for critical facilities and public infrastructure. So makes sense to put that other. This disclaimer, but exception in there, sorry. There's another comment on, uh, PS dash two dot four. The last sentence of that paragraph says maximum peaceful mitigation shall be incorporated. I hate to say it.
Right, right here too.
It sounds a little vague to me and I know that that's gonna raise a lot of issues, but maybe we can come up with a.
Yes.
Idea of what that means.
Yeah, you just can't say maximum.
Yeah, I don't think I've ever heard it, but I mean, I think you could just say peaceful mitigation.
Well, that may be not be strong enough. It's peaceful and all kinds of mitigation measures, but peaceful, they're ineffective.
But it could be peaceful mitigation shall be incorporated into the project in order to minimize adverse impact resources to the extent.
Effective mitigation.
Effective?
Yeah, good word.
I like effective.
It is judgmental. Of course, that's the whole idea, right?
Uh, uh, I'm just. Looking at your comment, TP seventeen at the bottom. And again, um. Not a big deal, but, uh, we, we keep continuing to talk about critical, uh, infrastructure. And high priority buildings and public, uh, infrastructure. And I don't know, maybe it would be useful to have some examples or maybe to define those in a little bit more detail. Uh, what's, again, what could be critical to one group of people may not be critical to others. Thinking.
Yeah, I, and that's from our old draft of the safety. I'm not, I'm not exact, I mean, I, I understand what critical. Facilities are for the most part conceptually, which would be. Water, hospitals, those.
Doesn't the state of California pretty well define what the critical facility is on?
That's just statewide, definitely.
There's all kinds of public facilities.
Yeah. Yeah, um, so. I could, but high priority buildings, I don't know. Is that like the unreinforced? Basinory construction that's so susceptible to earthquakes? I, I don't know.
High priority is, you know. It wouldn't city hall.
Well, yeah, exactly. This, this to me would be a high priority building. The firehouse, for example, too.
The firehouses are definitely, fire stations are always critical. Hospitals, schools.
Well, and maybe, so maybe. So remember, um, other initiatives are, um. They're not necessarily mandatory and they're not part of the L C P necessarily. So we, you know, those are more of our. Educate and promote and. Those sorts of things, but this one could be, I mean, maybe this is city specific. So maybe the city would inspect. Public, public infrastructure.
Well, well, yeah, because they have a whole lot of other infrastructure. They aren't, they're, they're not buildings of any kind that. You need to ensure their structural compliance. You know, that's a funny word, structural compliance. Structural integrity should be really.
I'd say it's structural integrity and compliance with those. I mean, if we're just monitoring and reviewing, I mean, maybe it should just be all.
Sorry, I'm sorry, you said what?
If, if, you know, it's really just monitoring and reviewing, um, maybe it should be all public facilities. I mean, are there, I mean. Yes, the city doesn't have to monitor the tennis courts, but it, but if a crack started in the tennis courts, it would be important for the city to address that.
And all the signs. And you don't want people spending a whole bunch of time monitoring things that. Yeah.
PS two point six. Development of critical and high occupancy facilities and geologic hazard areas. Is, what, what is a geologic hazard area other than the, um, Chris Priolo, Priolo zone? Which we also already don't, we don't allow any.
Well, I mean, you've got.
I mean, I think it could be landslides, it could be landslides and steep slopes.
The main one is, you know, ground movements hazards, my kind or not. Because you've got roads and all kinds of other infrastructure.
But that could be just in areas. In high hazard areas and moving in general, doesn't have to be.
Yeah, it, it sort of, because this is, you know, under the seismic specific section.
Yeah.
And I feel like that's just a general policy that. Yeah, should be in the more general policy section.
So like taking this whole section out?
No, moving it up to the top where it's, where it's general hazards, so. Any, any high hazard area?
Well, just for the record, PS two point six, and that just happens to be the. Referring to the table contents in this one document, right? I mean, that, there's not some. General document out there that uses these same. Policy statements, is there?
No, and so the numbering is a little confusing because this is the numbering from the documents that I copied it from, so probably had, I think of the, the PS ones were half and a half probably. Um.
Okay.
And so eventually, we're going to put them in the city's numbering. System and make them consistent, so it's just going to go three, four, five, six, it's.
Okay, so smooth, taking this out and putting a different. Number on it, it's no big deal, putting them out of order.
Yeah, I, I just leave it, I'm just leaving the numbers now because you might have made a comment on this policy before and I might have moved it. And so you want to find it again and if I change the number, you won't find it again.
Okay. Back in my mind someplace, if there was a standardized two point six is new critical high occupancy public facilities. Yes. All state, oh, the coastal zone, okay, not, not so, thank you.
You gonna beat Kelsey on page ten? Look to page eleven.
Well, just a quick comment there, your comment, TP eighteen, what about other things like brace and bolt program? Uh, yeah, that's important, but I think that's covered under the last bullet on page ten. Quite information to the public on ways to reinforce buildings and reduce.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I, I. I have anything else on this page?
My, my comment here is breaking out this west bluff from the south bluff. It's an assumption that they made here. That available. I think it was a hard fact that. One of those buffs is worse than the other, we, we. They talk about beaches, you know, protecting the bluff. The beach is coming to go. They're, they're, they're not like the constant. And over longer periods of time, a lot longer than just, you know, people memories. There are photos that are available, which go back to like nineteen forties. There's no, no documentation where major retreat, it's going to happen. On a episodic basis, at some angle. That's kind of what we're doing with, with this.
So this comes from Gary's. A landslide report that he did for Trinidad, so maybe we can talk a little bit more. And if you haven't seen that.
I have, I have, and it's, it's. There, there's nothing wrong with that, with that conclusion.
But it's not.
It, it. It could, it could be so, on, on honestly.
On a five night.
Leader part of historic time.
Yeah.
Since documentation is out there.
Okay.
I mean, Don Tunnell did some things back in the past too.
Yeah.
I don't know if you were that.
Yeah.
They're more generic, but I, I think there's been a, a lot, there's a lot of. There's a lot of potential for. Top edge of the bluff on the west side to be more consistent, just the, just the top edge, the, the big chunks out of it. But the one average edge hasn't moved much, but that smoke has steepened a lot over time.
Okay.
And. And even though you've got a raw bluff there, and you look out here to the south and it's all covered with trees and it's all mushy. You know, I, I think. I think it's risky to put in a document like this based on, you know. Good professional opinion, but.
And in a geologic context.
I, I would, I would probably look this. I hate to say it, but maybe even look to like the coastal commission geologists and see if it's consistent. Take a small area like this and have one bluff, one bluff that's almost immediately adjacent to the other. And look at them differently, and I, and I know the environment's different. At the same time, the underlying material is all the same. Some sort of geology overhears the same as over there, and the only real difference is exposure to the western, you know. Pacific, here's the bay. Now, everything in between there is isolating, you know, chunks of this and that. Think that that area doesn't have some bedrock under. Could be there to be working out different.
Rock blocks under there, um. There is some data. It was just, yes, but they're, they have been measuring. Um, beaches and there has actually, some of the beaches. Not far north of Trinidad are growing. But, but I, you know, that's just the last decade or two, just really lived, lived in.
So it seems to me, but there's, there's two things that make sense, maybe. One is, uh, I like your idea maybe of. Getting some input from the coastal commission in terms of how they will. Then the other thing is, uh, you know, we have information here, one could argue, you know, one expert versus another.
Yeah.
But why we just quote from whatever report this came from? And then it's clear that that's a singular.
That's a good idea.
Singular position, and then they, you know, people go from there.
But we could, we could quote from the report and or also include a disclaimer that says. Doesn't mean the risk on that bluff is less than anywhere else or something like that.
Yeah, if it, that my concern is that this language ends up affecting the policy, just like earlier.
The, the.
One twenty five feet versus a hundred or seventy five in another area.
And then that, that fails, so maybe the city's liable because it didn't give that one as much.
I don't know if you're liable, I mean, you got, you know, professional statements and. Which are full. Your full language.
That's a nice way of putting it.
Well, I've had professional experience in writing.
I know.
Disclaimer statements. But if we could get a better handle on that, I think it would be good, make the overall policy statements. And the studies that may come out of this, what could.
We move on to page twelve?
Sure. So, uh, again, I'll make my usual statement of. Taking on a lot, and that is on. The second to last paragraph, which is under figure fifty four, the last sentence says, in order to better understand these changes and the magnitude of their contributions. It is recommended that stormwater, groundwater and bluff faces be monitored. That's a huge task, and, um. I, I don't see, again, it goes back to the whole idea of programs versus policy. And taking on another task, which, um. Pretty big in my mind, sounds like. And I don't think we do that any.
And you, and you make it ten times bigger by putting in monitoring ground. I mean, it's one thing to do some monitoring of stormwater, you know. Measuring stormwater is probably not a bad idea. In, in the bluff bases, I mean, I can be done. You know. Photo processes and stuff, but, but trying to try, trying to connect the groundwater changes. What you're talking about here, because we have no basin.
We do, we do.
We have a rough basin.
Uh, we, we have.
I know the big, the big expensive monitor wells, I'm aware of.
Okay.
You know, but then trying to, trying to tie that then to, to water coming out at the bottom of the bluff, because there is no qualification of that.
No, but I, you know, this isn't a policy, um.
No, but you're recommending, like he said, putting in this effort to do monitoring.
Although it didn't actually even make it into all the policies, I, I mean, I still think it would be good to say. To the extent feasible or to the extent practical, this city should monitor these things. It's more information that's never about a thing.
Well, I mean, it's, this is. This is all kicked loose by the climate change issue, right? I mean, we're talking about climate change and everybody speculating on what that's going to be.
Which is why it'd be good to monitor it, have some data.
I think it would be too, but I don't think monitoring groundwater. In an area like this where you don't use the groundwater. And all you're doing to monitor the groundwater is sort of, you know, having to be a positive agent for bluff failure. You put it.
But you could look at whether the levels start to change or the direction starts to change.
Okay, so, so now you know that thirty feet under you, the water is now thirty two feet deep as it used to be. You know, thirty five feet deep, I mean, now, now what?
Well.
Doesn't hurt to have more data.
So you've suggested where feasible, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I mean.
And, and I. It would be beneficial to monitor if feasible.
Okay. I just think a lot of, a lot of folks around read these things in the, in the. Get into thinking that groundwater city is having some major influence. That. They're changing, it, it's something will change something else. I mean, it is what it is.
It is, I mean, but saturation is.
You know, the saturation changes seasonally.
Yes.
Much bigger than any predicted climate change that we're talking about right now. For the overall average, and we could get into a long discussion, but I don't want to do. I'm, I'm just saying is that. I'm just preferring that the groundwater was out of there, but hey, you're right, it's beneficial, it, all data is good data, right? Even if it's ridiculously expensive, it's worth.
Also, I mean, it just, it's a, it'd be nice to have it feasible.
There you go. When there's.
There are no winners.
No, I know, it's, it's not true.
Okay, all right, page thirteen. Big, big, big issue, but the last sentence of that paragraph, first paragraph there, put it in on the end of western.
Like where? Sorry.
The last sentence says, large beach along the western, just make, put it in there. So you just to prove that I agree.
They got that one.
Yeah. We won't argue it anymore, though.
Someone just, uh, gave us a, it was for that, that Yurok housing development and. Throughout the sequo document, they use. D H R U.
Okay. What's that?
Turn through. Apparently they were right.
Right. Hey, they very well knew that. Uh. I guess on your question there, Trevor, to move that paragraph. Did a climate change section seem like a good idea to me?
And maybe the one under the. Here, but.
Oh, yeah.
But fifty four, I don't know. Um, maybe that one too.
You know, I think. In, in the two sentences above that thing, I know I'm backing up a little bit here, but here we go again with this. Whoever wrote this. This with all these numbers, you know, about the floodlit, flood elevations of this beach and that beach. And, and, and all that, and I know there's a source of this data. But again, when they bring up the presence of a large beach along the western shore axis, buffer gets incoming waves. And we're talking about the future. And thinking that there's some reason to think that beach is always going to stay more of a beach.
Well, that, I mean, that is, so that's a FEMA, a FEMA determined those elevations, and so that's based on modeling. And I don't, that does not, that does not account for climate change or sea level rise. So that's just the current one percent, you know, flood, flood elevation.
They throw those numbers after the nears.
Yeah.
End of the foot, I really.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, astronomically stupid, but they, and they do it to be that actor, it's like. Calculator runs the number way past the decimal points and just write them down.
Well, and those types of models are apparently why Trinidad Head is in a very high, high fire hazard zone when. There's no other city on the coast until you get down to St. Sun Beach that has any very high fire.
Hey, well, the other island did burn up ten years ago.
I was, I was, I was wondering if that might.
Like that could be.
That might be part of why, because they, they put that fire in there, and so it had a recent fire, and so.
They're like similar conditions.
Oh, I, I was wondering if.
That could be true, it could be true, it could be true.
Yeah, that was my thought too, is that might be why.
Get some idiots that sets a fire on a rock, it's almost.
Yeah.
You know.
Because, because the model's supposed to emphasize ember transmission. Because because the model's supposed to emphasize ember transmission. I don't know.
That's a idiot that started your campaign.
Which I don't know, embers flying on a Trinidad Head. Apparently, it's a really high risk.
I looked at it somewhat from a different standpoint, is that when you look at the whole city, that is the one area which would be the hardest to fight a fire.
No, it's it's risk of a fire starting and burning.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't know how you get water up there.
We have to come from the sky.
Anyway, okay.
Anyway. That's a scary thought.
We move on to fourteen. Fifteen.
Yeah, just your your comment, TP twenty-two, yeah, I agree with it, could be covered in one three.
Sixteen. That whole program A through J seems too specific to be in here, it's more, should go in.
So in the regulations.
Yeah.
Well, it's a lot less than what it was in there.
The only other reason to have it in there is it may show the the extent of what is expected in a balance like this, which is, you know, awful lot of items to cook. So people think that having a a program, you know, is just a no big deal thing. This was certainly open their eyes.
Well, because previously, it was I think that whole thing took up like a page and a half, there were more of them, and it said shall include, uh, as.
Right, yeah.
I think, you know.
But in some ways you 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 do have, you know, you talk about the qualified profession, right? Writing these, doing these.
Yeah.
Commissions. And since that's kind of opening, qualified profession.
We could, we could define that, but it's difficult to define that for because we haven't defined in our receptive ordinance, for example, but it's gonna, this is gonna be a different qualified professional, so.
Oh, yeah, but it's still going to cover a fairly wide range of
Yeah.
of professionalism and experience, because you can't get too specific, or you'll end up with the the licensing boards all over you, right? It's like years, the jobs, defending their profession, right? So what it is if you, if if you don't get very specific, and maybe this belongs in opinions, but if you don't say these are things that need to be at least considered, you could end up with a professional report that doesn't cover enough of the issues to give you good answers.
I think that's the thing, Tim, and I, you know, I think if you if you look at, for example, the conservation element, um the Coastal Commission wants a lot of specificity in these, because these are what the zoning ordinance is going to be based on and you know, how CDPs are supposed to be evaluated. It's a, it's a different standard than if this were not a coastal general plan, if this were, this were just a inland general plan, I wouldn't get this. But I think, I think this level of specificity is consistent with other policies that we have, like the requirements for, what is it, um developments of sorry, I forget, but ones that would generate a lot of strong water, there's developments of concern or something, and fish on it, it's got, it's got a list like this. I don't know if we can get away from that.
Yeah, in some place, otherwise they just said, would just say, well, we'll give you a list of criteria and it would be more overestimating this, but at least the whole damn state has to deal with it.
And then putting in this putting this in the ordinance wouldn't satisfy.
I mean, and that's a good question, I I mean, that's, their comments have before been that they want this but I could have that conversation with them, I mean, because I think um our original approach would be to say amend the zoning ordinance to include some of this stuff, and the Coastal Commission doesn't want that, because they want the zoning ordinance at the same time. So why do you, why do you need a amendment of this? I think it's worth having a conversation.
Good. You got some sixteen? Seventeen?
The problem was instead of teams, it's non-conforming development part. Whereas usually defined was non-conforming. And the consequences being considered as non-conforming development are pretty serious. Anybody who's trying to do a develop.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a good question, um, you know, any work that they're doing that rises to the level of requiring a permit, then they'd have to do the study and they'd find out, but what if they're just putting in some new windows and residing and getting a building permit?
But it it's also requiring these things for for additions.
Well, yes, I mean, and and we, I mean, we already require permit for additions, um. Yeah, I mean, I think the idea is that, you know, if you're, if your structure is too close to the bluff, they don't allow you.
The other side of the house away from the bluff. Why, why would, why would you make somebody study the bluff if you have, you know, a
I think to know, to know if it's within that possible retreat area for a lifetime of the structure.
But the existing structure is grandfathered in, you can't tell somebody.
But by adding on to it, you're one, increasing the value and extending the life of it.
Why would you extend the life by putting an addition on an old path? Who's determining that?
By making it less likely someone's gonna wanna tear it down and rebuild something. I think that's, I think that's the reason.
I think this is, it's really onerous.
This is a, this is a tough one, um.
The existing development in in an area, who cares what hazard, the the people who buy it, you know, now they may have to have a deep restriction, they buy it anyway.
Well, I I think, you know, for an addition, so if you want to do an addition, that's new development, you have to show that it's not subject to or increasing hazard. So you have to do the study for the addition, and the question is, is the addition within that hazard area?
Well, I would say that, I mean, if the addition would extend into, you know, deeper into the hazard area, because again, this is a continuum. So you you're not.
Sure.
You're not at the same level hazard on the edge as you are a hundred and twenty feet back from it, we know that. The huge difference in in risk and in timeline of treating bluffs. So why, why would you need to go through this study? It's going to be expensive.
Because, and I, so it does, because development is so broadly defined in the Coastal Act that an addition would be new development, that is, that is development, and Coastal Act requires that development not be subject to hazards nor increased hazards, so that addition by itself is development, you have to show that it's not.
Why, why not, you know, put in something that basically says, uh that there could be exceptions? Well, I, I, I guess, I mean, are there any, you know, like I say, some somebody is in an area and it's now within the hazard area, you're gonna find a whole bunch of places around here are gonna be in this hazard area, right? A hundred and twenty-five feet back from bluff edge, I mean, you've covered a third of the pack. At least it's thirty to the left.
Well, you know, yes. I could see, okay, so, um a while back, John Crane came with an application for the deep blocks, and wanted to add, I mean, that was a pretty small addition, but it was an addition. So in that circumstance, to me, it would make sense to allow that addition, even though it's probably still in that hazard zone, but then you add all these deep restrictions and conditions to it. And then that kind of covers, you're actually gaining some, even though you're letting him add on in that hazard zone, you're still kind of gaining those mitigations for it, for the whole thing being.
Well, see, that's, that's a compromise. That makes sense.
I I read this totally different. Yeah. Okay, so I read this to say that if a structure does not or no longer meets the standards or setbacks required for redevelopment in that location, it then is defined as non-conforming only when the setback changes. And that the intent of considering it non-conforming is so that new development must conform to the standards and avoid the use of shoreline protected devices and sufficient bluff for beach setback.
Yeah, there you go, I'm good with that.
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, I mean, I'm
That's it, yeah, come to it nicely.
So wait, say that again?
Oh, God, I don't think I can.
The same idea with my example.
Get that on the recording, is it in the recording?
Yeah, it is. No, I guess, guess my.
Oh, that was good.
Yeah. Uh, we could go back and look at the recording one time.
Well, I'm.
Um, okay, but I think we're getting at the fit at that where, okay, so you allow the addition, but then you're putting all those mitigations on the whole structure, right? That's kind of what you were saying.
Well, I I I'm, yes, basically, is that a structure would only be defined as non-conforming when the setback has changed. And.
Or or if it never had the study to begin with.
Part of the Indian head study.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, and that the the intent of having to develop the the um addition is to preclude the use of future shoreline protected devices.
Yeah.
And to make sure that you've got the proper setback, so I I I just look at it a little bit different, that's all.
Well, I mean, that's, that, that, if you right, if 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 that analysis leads to someone saying, well, I need to keep my home here because it's already here, and now I'm going to put it in a shoreline you know, structures, yeah, that's we know how that's that that's something we want to want to see in almost every circumstance.
You want to avoid the shoreline protective devices, of course, yeah.
I like that. I don't know if that's what that's supposed to say, but that's what makes sense to me.
Well, go back and look at it and and or listen to it, if it makes any sense, then we can always, we're gonna look at this again.
Yeah.
Right? So we can.
I'm I'm sure you've heard several times.
Yeah, we can flag that and then have further discussion on it, I'm sure.
Move on to eighteen?
Sure. My comment, we've already talked about it, is we find a critical public infrastructure facilities that are mentioned a couple of places here, so.
Can you uh refresh my memory of what redevelopment is?
I believe, um, and the Coastal Act does define that, so I need to define but I need to include the definition of existing. But we probably need to have a different term than just existing. I think redevelopment is um fifty percent or more of the structural components, so foundation walls.
Should be like a remodel.
So like, if you're, if it's all interior, I think you're fine. Um, if you replace one wall, you're fine, if you replace just the roof, you're fine, but if it's fifty percent or more of the structural components, I mean, it's.
Got some eighteen? Nineteen?
Uh, two comments real fast, um, under P S dot a dash P V dot six, mitigation of monitoring of shoreline protection impacts, says that the monitoring plan shall be phased in twenty-year increments. Uh, I I guess my feeling, my gut feel is that maybe twenty years might be too long a period of time uh for an increment to do the monitoring, but uh if that's some regulatory thing somewhere, that's fine, too, but it just seems to me that that twenty years, there's a lot that can happen, especially when we're looking at some of the weather changes, climate changes that we're anticipating, so I.
I think the intent is that um, you know, you're, you do the study now, and it shows that you're good for seventy-five years, but in twenty years, you have to revisit that. So you should have, you would assume twenty years is enough, but but what this is saying is that you need a whole new C P. Twenty years, which every twenty years is actually comes faster than a repack.
Well, that that way, that is true, right, right, so maybe, I I'm not pushing for anything different, it's just the the twenty years, uh.
Do you have a model for the twenty years, for that?
Yeah, this is from Happen Bay, and I'm so I I wanted to shorten this one, I shortened this one down to and I I think it's very confusing, which is why I said maybe they're just permitted in twenty-year cycles, so you just, just like I have with mining permits. Um, you know, they're five-year permits, you can get extensions, or no, they're twenty-year permits, and you can get it. I forget, anyway, mining permits occur a a specific period of time, that's something like twenty.
If there's legislation that covers those numbers, I mean, I mean.
No, I'm I'm guessing this is just something that the Coastal Commission decided was reasonable. But I I think like, you know, I think using that as a model, basically, you're, basically, if you get a shoreline protection device, you you basically get a twenty-year permit for it, and and you have to, and then you have to do some monitoring, and then at the end of the twenty years, you have to re-permit it, and you might have to change something.
Like I said, if anybody can get a permit to put in a shoreline protection device, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a very we say, this is word for it, it's, it's gonna be very stout. Right, it's gonna be designed to the T. My guess, it's just gonna pass muster, so it holds, it's built, I guess, it actually gets approved the first time on. It's gonna be very robust and sort of. Be. You know, in your life.
But it's more that you just sort of revisit. You make some modifications, is it is it performing how you expected, is it having offside impact, you know, and do you have to make some modifications to it?
I bet in order to get a permit to build one of those, I think pretty much any place along the coast. Not only will there there be requirements for the construction, the the probably tack on there, at least short term. Monitoring any.
Yeah. But how do you, if you don't have this twenty year increments, how do you go back and change anything if it doesn't turn out to work? I think that's that's just the end of it.
Well, how do they carry forward the requirements to monitor anything?
By having it be a twenty year.
Take the time for it.
You know, and I added some, because I think. You know, when we were reviewing the hassle project, coastal commission was kind of making noises about, oh, you should make them take out the the. Protection that's there, and to me. That seems like that would cause more environmental damage. So I added some language.
But what was it hurting?
I mean, it's a very rocky shoreline and they just sort of poured some concrete.
I mean, if it if it was diverting wave energy to a neighbor, most of it accelerated.
Not not that we know of.
They have a base for.
Yeah.
Taking something out, but otherwise you're right, you know.
No, they just want to take it out on principle, but I, to me, that seemed pretty destructive to to turn.
Nature will have its way.
Yeah. So anyway, um, so yeah, I think that's the idea and and maybe this could be worded a little bit more clearly is that. Is that shoreline protection structures would be permitted on twenty.
You think it's ten years or something?
Well, I just.
I mean, I would.
I I I just was thinking that, you know, we're we're talking about something that's supposed to protect the shoreline and sometimes we have had very severe. Whether climate or climate conditions and is twenty years a reasonable period of time to wait? To do an inspection, so to speak, however, um, as you pointed out, that if there was ever to be. An approval of the shoreline protection, it's going to be pretty damn. Protective and it will be happy, be robust, there's no question about it, so I I I'm fine, you know, we can kind of noodle on it and, you know, think about whether or not that's a reasonable time period, but.
I mean, it could be. It could be something like you you condition it on being evaluated in five years or ten years on. You could have something. Something in there where it's, you sort of revisit it in five years and.
It might be like they deal with a lot of hazardous material sites. You know, if you check it a year after, you check it three years after, you check it ten years after, eventually. You know, it's just fine, maybe the next one's twenty years, it would be gradual, it would be gradual, but that's too complicated.
I think also, you know, one of the things that it does seem like. What I what I think is probably going to be like for for managed retreat, for example, uh, it's gonna be. Okay, it's not a specific time, it's we're gonna monitor it and when this happens, then we're gonna do something else. So it's gonna be a phased um kind of thing, and we could do something similar with shoreline protection where. Where it has standards that it has to meet, and if the monitoring shows it's no longer meeting those standards, then. Yeah.
We use it for permit. You just substitute that kind of thing for this?
Yeah, potentially, essentially, yeah.
Yeah, that. That's reasonable and that's open energy. He gets like specific.
And then just one other little small comment there, under paragraph B. Uh, the last sentence, mitigation measures shall be, something just got left off.
Yeah, I, again, this is one of these things where it had these whole long descriptions after each of these and I just took out.
Moving on to twenty. Round to twenty one. Um. I didn't know if you wanted, I mean, there's those newest fire hazard severity maps or. What are the twenty twenty five ones, I guess?
Yeah.
There's old ones that are floating around out there too that.
Uh, okay, guys, yeah, twenty, yes, so the the S. The S R A maps for twenty twenty four. And there is just F Y I K, put the information on the website today, it's under the. Public notices and meters, you can get to it.
Yeah, I was having trouble finding it, had to go through Sonoma County, yeah.
Oh, well, you just put it up there today.
Yeah, great. Anything on twenty one? On two?
Well, my my comment is what I made earlier about, uh, this is under uh. Paragraph E of uh six dash. Trinidad volunteer fire department. Is consulted during the review of development proposals, um. It's my understanding like there's three, maybe four volunteer fire department people. And I believe that even half of them don't even live in the city, so it might be problematic to have them be. Consulting, although it doesn't probably happen very often, I guess my suggestion would be, could we use Cal Fire, which is. Maybe a better source for that sort of thing, but.
If if they're willing to repeat city projects.
Yeah, of course, I mean, they seem to be willing to do it. Outside the city. Just.
Well, and that's where, you know, there's these efforts to formalize a mutual aid agreement and that sort of thing, which would be important.
Yes, yeah.
Anything else on twenty two? Nine to twenty three? Moving on to twenty four? Twenty four? Going to twenty five?
Did you, did anybody, I think Tristan, he mentioned you like a graph. Basically, that table and the graph show the same things on page twenty. Like a graph. You like them both?
Here we have both.
You can have a both, sure.
Got it. Anything else on twenty five? Twenty six? Uh. I guess I'd I'd got on board with the. Observe average temperature in Trinidad, sixty two degrees for the past.
Oh, yeah, you promised that before, didn't you?
Maybe I've said that before.
The contradictory data.
I don't have the data in this court.
Other than living here.
Anything else on twenty?
That that seems fairly high, and that might be like an average daytime high or, you know, something like that.
That's in that, maybe. In the summer, average high.
The the um, the first full paragraph there that starts due to these changes, the reason. The region may effectively lose uh rainfall. I don't know that that adds anything, and the reason I say that is because it goes on to talk about. Trinidad depends on local streams and a very limited storage capacity. That is not necessarily true in terms of of what could happen in the future. What I mean by that, I mean, there's lots of effort to increase storage capacity. And or other sources. And um, so um. I don't know, I don't, I don't know that we, that it's. Pretty much of an editorial comment based on current conditions. Change in, who knows?
Well, so, you know, I think one of the things that is important is. That the city not go forty years before updating its general plan again, and so. If the city's source of water changes, the general plan would be updated.
We could love where you have, since before that say, something may happen and then conditions could, and then you say this is serious. I mean, it's like.
Well.
Speculating, speculating, and then you're putting out a very serious concern, you know, assuming that all of a sudden.
Well, even if even if nothing changes, I think that the city's. Water supply disappearing is a serious concern.
Yeah, you you're, yeah, that's it. The city of Trinidad has has problems with water supply. They have it now.
And I think, I mean, I think it's, it's not just um about storage, but soil storage as well, so um. I I think it means that, I mean, Luffath Holt's Creek is likely to have lower flows because there's less soil, water, storage and. More of that will transpiration. Uh. But I don't, I don't think we need to have three to six inches, I don't, I don't think that.
I could take the water out of milk curd, I think.
It's only had on that page.
Anything else on twenty six? Well.
I agree.
Twenty seven?
Well, once again, uh, under P S dash one dot one, best available science, uh, the last sentence says that, again, we're going to be obligated to. Do vulnerability assessments and related mapping every ten years. Or as necessary, um, just again, it. It's my general concern that we're picking on a lot and we're putting artificial time constraints on some of this stuff.
I think that's in the new legislation, since we have that.
Yeah.
I will check, and I think, I think I took out, if possible, I think the Hapman Bay had it ten years and I took, I put in the. I think that's actually in the legislative.
Okay.
I will check.
Um. The very last policy on that page, P S two C dot one. I think that's basically the same as. Way back on page five, policy. P S two C dot five, like. Facilities and or. I I guess by the time I read that one, I was like, I feel like I've read this one a few times.
Okay.
And I.
Check and see if they can be combined.
I think that's, we can combine that into a different policy. Anything else on twenty seven? It's a twenty eight.
So um, under P S dash. Two C dot two, coastal trail improvements, are we referring to the California coastal trail? Infrastructure because it's capitalized? And I didn't know if that was referring to that or if we're just talking about coastal trails in general.
I think that's probably the California coastal trail.
Okay, um. And then, and and I'll get back to why I raised that as an issue, because the next one, it's a state parks facility. And. I don't understand why we're dealing with state parks or the California coastal trails, shouldn't that be a state responsibility?
Um, no, well, no, so state, state parks within, state parks are subject to the local L C Ps. So like when state parks. Because of this.
That's true, that's true, all right, okay.
So the California coastal trail does go through the state park in city limits.
Uh, back again on the coastal trail, though, uh, it says consider planned retreat, and that's that's fine, but. Um. It it implies that the city is responsible for doing all of this. And I, and i- is that really what we're intending to do, that we have to look at uh? Uh, looking at new setbacks and. You know, moving the trail? To see that.
I see more concerns, like. If you've got, you've got trails up there, clearly well into the head.
Well, and and. Yes.
And are they even being maintained appropriately? And responsible for fixing them, moving them?
Yeah, I mean.
It seems like such an overreach.
It would be, I mean, I think all the. I mean, most of the trails are on city property or city easements. So in that sense, it's city property, but then I think the idea would be. Okay, so someone wants to add on or redevelop their house that's near a trail and then require a bigger easement. To move that trail at some point in the future.
Well, I mean, you're thinking those trails that are along the the west bluff, I mean, sure, those are. Most people, what's what's he thinking about? It's like.
Well, that's that's the other thing, is that uh, the California coastal trail, when we talk about that one. That doesn't necessarily follow all the trails in town, there's parts of it that go up onto. Seaneek and then it goes down Edwards, right?
Yeah, I think it goes down.
I've seen the 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 figures.
It goes down Gross Lane, Parker, I think it goes down Parker Creek or Gross Lane and then along.
You may be right, right.
Oh, on the beach itself.
Yeah.
Then cross the that little rocky head.
And then probably. No, probably, it probably goes up the window.
Yeah, there you go, yeah.
Uh, I I guess my point is it's somewhat of a convoluted trail.
But it's defined.
It's defined as the California coastal trail, and I'm not so sure that we should be responsible for some of the areas.
Yeah.
Uh, and this would imply that there's a lot of stuff that we're supposed to do for a state trail, that's all I'm trying to say.
Okay.
I think that's a good point. I mean, it's in, yeah, like, we could just delete that whole program.
Um, or.
Or or maybe it's more general.
Or in collaboration with the state, we need to work to do stuff, but I just don't want to get stuck. Sure, I guess that's what I'm saying, okay.
Well, I mean, and just think of the, if, if you even had the means to for realigning trail segments at that sufficient distance to avoid impact, I mean, the city's responsible for figuring that out, even before they implement. And if they can't implement it, so ownership, it, it, yeah, this seems like
We already can't maintain a trail, let alone
Yeah, you know, and
Well, and I, and I think it's important to make a distinction between the state trail and the city's trail as trails, if you will.
Are any of those on the west unstable property? Isn't it all a state park? With the burn off?
Well, I mean, if it's on the it depends on if you're talking about, you know, going up. If it's going up Ewing on, you know, in front of the Marine Lab, that would be city. And there is, that's, I think, designated a trail, but on the beach, it would be Rancheria or State Park property.
But the trail was on the top, at the top of the block. Or, you know.
Yeah, and that's, that's probably, that's probably State Park property.
So I mean, that, that one, you sure as hell don't want to be taking that. Maintaining that.
No, but it'd just be if they have to come to the city for a permit, this is, we require them to do that.
Well, that's appropriate. John Frampton was one of the losses based on people walking on the blood empty stabilizer.
The coastal trail doesn't go along state beach, on the beach and then cut up at the far end. Do we know that?
Have to look.
In which case it would just be avoiding all the bluffs.
We can, we can pull it up.
Is it? I couldn't know if it's like this.
Well, I mean, the thing is, these are it's a policy statement.
So it's under Departments and Services, Planning and Building, General Plan. And Conservation.
The general plan documents.
Yeah. You could go all the way to the end. Yeah, it goes along. Yeah, oh, okay, it goes there.
Page or you want?
That, the very last page on the conservation.
Last page, okay. Ah, there it is, yeah.
So there's a go up the window and that's interesting. I wonder when we talked about closing that trail, the Coastal Commission did not bring that up.
But I, I don't see it going up the window.
Yeah, well, it goes down the window.
Uh, the, the lower part of the window.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Right, right. And then, yeah, down, down onto the
Grounds of Beach, yeah.
But it comes to the top of Exalating?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because they show a dotted line on the shore there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you on Seaneek, then you come down. I guess that's Parker Creek, right?
Yeah, Parker Creek, yeah, Gro- Gross Lane and Rancheria.
Trying to continue, it goes
Yeah.
Over towards the little head. Where's this line here?
That's a different trail.
The little brush lines are just city trail.
Okay, where you go across this this tangent, so
Who can do that?
I loved doing it when I was a kid, but
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, okay. So the trail on the top is not considered an official trail up here.
Which one, which one? Here? Top of the block.
Along here.
Well, no, see this, this is
They show a trail
Oh, I see, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Here.
Yeah.
Well, this is draft. Um, we could pull up the certified trail map if you want, but, but this blue line, blue, thick blue line is the official California Coastal Trail. The brown, the brown city, the brown trail lines, some of those are proposed. They're not all officially certified.
Okay.
Well, maybe they've been uncertifying, but the ones along the west bluff top, we, especially the ones that are going up and down.
Yeah, those.
The ground is almost stable.
Well, uh, but for example, on the west bluff, that is an existing trail.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's an
The one on the top.
I'm just saying, is it?
But the one that connects down. But we're getting off track.
Well, I guess the point is that, that I was trying to make is that whatever is involved in the Coast, California Coastal Trail, I just want to make sure that we're not
Yeah.
on the hook to have to do anything with it, so that's all, okay.
Okay.
One of the main ones there connects up with that Salinger Trail, isn't it?
Yeah.
We're in hook for that one?
But we're on the hook for that one anyway. But I guess we could actually blame the state.
Yeah, just in on board. Uh, anything else on twenty-eight?
Well, I don't I mean, just, I was questioning the whole idea of state parks facilities, you know, the city taking responsibility of the, of shot to, to know that that's an actual fact.
It's um, it's kind of a unique to the coastal zone. The, the school is also subject to the city's LCPs, which not, um, the Marine Lab is not, the universities are, so.
Um, all right, moving on to twenty-nine?
I, I felt that this shoreline management plan was pretty well covered in other areas. I didn't see that, that this to me was a little bit more redundant. A lot of this has already been discussed in some detail.
You know, to he guess to halfway through that first paragraph, triggers for relocation or removal of structures. I mean, there's no definition for what this trigger is. Then, then who is establishing? This, this don't open ending that I, I question it's be useful or enforceable in any way. And, and you know that you, you know, forcing retreat of of things is going to be a certain legal hazard. But somehow you know, defining these, these triggers.
Well, you're, you're saying you don't think that the triggers are defined adequately here?
Well, bringing up this, pretty subjective.
Well.
I think
When the monthly high tide are within a certain distance of the finished floor elevation? When building officials prohibit occupancy, that's
Well, that, that one, of course, that, that was pretty clear. If a building official assumes that
Yeah.
I, I think it can be worried more clearly. I think triggers for relocation or removal um, will be determined on a project or site specific basis.
Seems like it would have to be.
Yeah, so I think that rather than changing site conditions is pretty vague and then such as um, I think would be clearer.
But where I need such as within a certain distance of the foundation, who, who decides this distance?
Well, that's what, I think that's the site specific professional determination when they get their permit. So this is like a vacant lot. Um, and, and because the Coastal Commission can't have takings, full takings. You have to let them develop it, but you have these triggers.
Well, okay, so they're, they're talking about location, relocation, removal of structures. Well, we're talking about how right, what other structure are we talking? I mean, roadways?
I mean, it could be, I mean, not in
If it's
Could be commercial.
If it's, if it's a public facility, it's one thing. But now we're talking about privately owned structures.
Could be something other than a house.
If I will finish more locations, that sounds like a house.
Well, it could be, for example, it could be a, a, an ADU.
Yeah, it could be a
Auxiliary, uh, accessory building.
Because, I mean, it could potentially even be a, a commercial structure.
Well, I'm just thinking that property owners responsible to remove and restore the site. And we need to put a wetland barter also approaching on. If you're forced to do this, I guess it's the best way to do it, but I think this needs to be a lot more specific to make sure that some of the water, water structures and public and private uh, that we're fleshing that out would be be important. What, what a threatening
Well, the wetlands, wetlands probably aren't a thing in Trinidad. They are in a lot of places where you have more title influence, title weapons, um. But, but maybe it's environmental license of habitat.
If we're un, undeveloped parcels, I don't have a problem, any of this.
Well, that's what this, that's what this is. This is
The same paragraph talks about structure.
Well, but it's a new structure on and undeveloped. So someone wants to develop a vacant parcel in a hazard zone.
That's the way you read it?
Yeah.
For relocation or removal of the structure.
Yeah, so, so say, you know, maybe it's um, on Van Wick, there's a parcel and it's in that you, it's, it's within the area where bluff retreat would be anticipated to hit the house in less than seventy-five years.
But then rewrite, rewrite it so it doesn't imply that we're talking about existing structure. It'll be planned structure.
I mean, does it not? I guess I read it to be any, basically any development, so it could be in addition to an existing structure kind of thing. Not just an undeveloped.
He, he says when building officials prohibit occupancy, I mean, come on. How would you?
Well, because it's already developed, so when you're getting the permit to put a house, then you put these conditions on it, say, when the bluff gets so, so far of the foundation, then you have to do this or
You're projecting out it.
Yes, yes. And I, I think, I think you would not, I don't think you would allow an addition in a hazard area. I mean, it's not a significant addition because the, I think this is specific to avoid takings on vacant parcels.
So this thing should be completely written to reflect that because it's I mean, I read it over half a dozen times and I didn't get that. True, there should be no confusion in something particularly kind of draconian this is.
But no, I think the idea is it's projecting out, so if you're going to get a permit to put this house in a hazard area, you're gonna, and, and we did that with, with House Request, I think, where it said if, if the bluff retreated to within ten feet of the leach field, you had to do something. It was the, it was the, that idea.
But once again, I read it a little bit differently, but
Okay.
Well, for all we were reading, if we're all reading it differently
Then it's not
Yeah, but we're writing, so there's no confusion.
Yeah.
I, I don't disagree with that, that's, that's true, but um, I just had a little bit, yeah, uh. You have to read the first sentence. To me, that's, that's more important than that's, this is when a lot is not large enough to accommodate development.
Right.
So we're already talking about an exception of something.
That's right, yes.
And this development that avoids, uh, when, when the lot is not large enough to accommodate development, that avoids shoreline hazards or inland migration of public trust boundary with the anticipated life of the development. Then you develop a project option which minimizes the hazards uh, from the different issues and encroachment on public trust boundary as long as possible. And then if those triggers hit, then you move it.
Yes.
So to me, that's, that's what it's
But clearly I need to, maybe some bullet points or something would be better, maybe
Or you restate it halfway through the, this is what we're talking about a lot that's not large enough to accommodate development.
Well, that's, that could be the first bullet, you know, so to speak, yeah, I, I think that there's, it can be
So that it's really clear that if you're wanting to build something new on an existing parcel, which is obviously done, for your voluntary use, that you maybe you have to go through the study and you have to make agreements that if the worst happens, do you have to relocate tree or demage?
Yes.
And restore?
Yes.
Okay with that.
I, that I believe is what the intent is.
Okay.
I think it could probably be redevelopment though, too, of, of a parcel then.
Well, that, yeah, I, I, I mean, if, if basically somebody says, I want to change a bunch of stuff and say, this is what you're going to have to go through, then they can say, well, I guess I'll just be happy
That's right.
It is, and uh, and not go through what it takes to get on.
And, and you're right, I think that the little phrase here, develop a project option that minimizes hazards could include redevelopment.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Jack, twenty-nine? Yep, thirty?
Uh, one more today. Shoreline Management, bluff retreat, hazard overlay. How is this all going to be a conflict? I mean, it's got a nice, it's got a nice list.
And that's what I said earlier, my other comment was that this whole section in mine has already been addressed elsewhere.
Yeah. Guess that's the main, the main thing. Because it, it brings up the whole thing again about requiring, you know, real estate, um, disclosures and all of that stuff. No state of disclosures and all of that stuff. We talk about. Requiring. No state agents of all things to inform potential buyers. I guess this is sellers, but, uh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
One, one time, you know. You can see those words really clear.
This seems way beyond, I mean, sure, it might be, but this seems way beyond anything Trinidad can do. If I remove one of them. And maybe it's a conversation with the coastal commission as well. Is this in, intended to be, um? Because there were two of these. I found two similar ones. I mean, one advantage to the city could be if you have a. Something like this, then you could apply for grant funding to do something like that, but. Like, so I don't know that that's, how much of that's really the city's responsibility. Or maybe like Edward's street.
You have resources to do, you can partially do any of this. Huge, yeah. Especially if it's going to be accurate, vendably. You can work with a plan that, you know. Impact of. A lot, a lot of people, it better be right. Sultan's dream.
Moving on to thirty. Uh, all good. I'm thirty, going to thirty one.
Just, I just, I agree with your comments. You, you know, you wanted to move on one section, that's fine. I think that it's adequately covered in other policies elsewhere, so.
Yeah, I think not necessarily this policy, but I think it's conservation.
Could be, yeah.
But we would, but we have been including the same policies, so I might just pull a conservation policy.
Uh, I have a, I guess. Question about seven fifty three, new development been adjacent to streams. What? What are we defining adjacent? Given that seven fifty two says no development in streams or in current area zones. Either we don't need seven fifty three or it means something else. I guess.
Being really open ended, I think, was that the goal there? By the way. I mean, it's kind of not specific. It's, it's like a goal, it's not.
It's written much more, I, I think I can pull in. I think it'd be better to pull in some conservation element policy.
Anything else on thirty one? Moving to thirty two.
Just a comment. I don't know that it necessarily has to be. Policy per se, but. Should we include some sort of? Say, develop a process for alerting the responsible emergency teams. Um, for hazardous materials because it, it appears that the city really doesn't have anything. Capable of handling this. So all of that expertise has to come elsewhere from elsewhere. And do we want, do we want to have some sort of procedure for alerting? And maybe that's in the EOP.
That might, yeah, that might, yeah, that might be this next section, disaster response and recovery.
Could be, yes.
I mean, yeah.
Is it, is the city ever done any kind of like a base once, data set?
Yeah, down in the harbor area.
I mean, just the city in general?
Uh, not that I know of.
Data research and. You could do that. I mean, that would probably cover something that. In expense, but sometimes those things can be generic enough, but. Basically take the responsibilities away from city staff. You have an outside person do a, a site assessment. You can do, you can do that in any site area. It's for the government. Since there wouldn't be much here, and it would just. Put it right in different.
Probably not, no.
Gas station, what's that, the harbor, you know, zero minute places.
I guess it's probably primarily transportation.
Well, I, yeah, I, I, I think I made this comment before, since the freeway runs through the town. I was concerned about any hazardous. Accidents that could have. On the freeway, uh, which would be, you know, something that we, a, a survey wouldn't help you with.
No.
Because it's, that's, you know, an accident.
No, 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 emergencies wouldn't.
Yeah.
And, and, you know. Anticipating buyers. All of a sudden, you don't have a, an evaluation of what's there. And then people will begin with a fire. On a different basis.
Yeah.
It's generally, like you say. You know, Caltrans is responsible for what happens in the right of way, but that doesn't mean. It happens in the right of the stage.
Exactly, yeah. See a tanker full of gas or something like that.
All right, um. Move on from. Agenda item number three and move on to commissioner reports.
Reports.
Either staff report?
Um, what is your availability to meet maybe at five before the regular city council meeting and late for a joint meeting?
Uh, I looked at my calendar. I don't know what I, that.
As long as you don't pick the archetypes under this. Maybe we're. Surgery out of the area.
And that would be, well, and, and I mean, we could consider maybe canceling the April meetings until you'll have, if you guys are going to be at the city. Council meeting, so that might be an option, depending on what we have going on, um. And that would be the meeting where Laffco is going to give a presentation to you. So we, I think the idea was we can start at five. Have a joint meeting with the city council and then you would start the regular meeting and one of the early items would be the Laffco.
At the eight?
So, um, uh, there's been a couple of issues that we have raised even tonight. That would be nice to have in the agenda of that meeting. Can you send out an agenda? Maybe we can.
Okay.
Just, I, I would just like to make sure we've hit everything. We don't get to do this very often.
Yeah, um, yes. And I would probably revise my. Planning projects that I had last time to maybe add some of these things.
Is it your sense that the city council will go along with that? Date and time?
So.
Well, that, that's their normal meeting day.
Right.
It'd just be an hour.
Just an hour.
Yeah, which they often do a closed session anyway. So.
The joint session would not be a closed session.
No.
Anything else, Drew?
I just like to say I appreciate going through the process that we gave tonight.
I thought, yes, I'm, and these were, these were really good comments and I think we're finally getting it to like. Better point, um. Oh, I guess just one other thing I would say is that I did in my. Last meeting with coastal commission staff, um, it was clarified that I can request an extension on the LCP grant. And I can request more funds, so. It, it would be a new grant application, but now they have a rolling. Roll, they're, they're worried about not spending all their money. And so it's a rolling grant and anything less than five hundred thousand dollars can be approved administratively, so. Think, because we're running out of some budget on some things and this. No idea. Our, our draft was so inadequate, but, um. Yeah, so I'll be, I'll be looking into that.
Good. Significant additional help, right?
Well, at least we have more time for me to work on it.
I was talking about.
I, I'm just going to prolong this until I have any time.
Right. Keep getting those.
Don't do that to us.
All right, um.
I know damn well she's got some additional help down there.
Feature agenda items? I don't know if there's much to add to that or discuss there.
No, I think, uh. I'm going to continue working on the safety element, um. I'd like to start bringing new pieces of the implement zoning ordinance. Um, although if we can get an extension on the grant, that's not as critical, which is nice because I know there was a comment last time about. It would be beholden to grants, but. I think. I know the city council sees the donor plan as a priority and I think you guys do too, so. We don't want to put, put these things up.
All right. Meeting adjourned. It wasn't great.
You guys are.